Good evening. Welcome to regular planning committee meeting. What is this, August?
Fourteen.
Fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you. Please rise and join us in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see. Planning Commission members present this evening. We have Ms. Hugo, Mr. Andre, Ms. Coulter, Mr. Joyner, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Hoffman, Ms. Nassar, Mr. Bush, our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Jeremy Smith, and our consultant with Giffords Webster. I believe you're still there, right?
I am still there.
All right. We have an opportunity for public comment. I don't see anyone here from the public.
Open and close.
The public comment portion, seeing no one present in front of the public, we will close it, bring it back up to the planning commission. Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chairperson, I would move to approve the minutes of July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
As presented, no changes?
This is correct.
Support? Motion by Mr. Hoffman, support by Mr. Joyner to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes eight-zero. Next is approval of this evening's agenda. Any changes?
None.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Bush to approve the this evening's agenda as presented, support by Mr. Amat. What?
I'm not voting.
Mr. Andre.
Okay, sure.
He was up on the last one.
Yeah, club.
Got an A stuck in my throat. All right. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes eight-zero. Correspondence, we do have.
You do, but that's part of our public hearing. If it could be read during that period, please.
Yeah. No other correspondence, no old business.
None.
New business, only case six seventy-four, and it's got an R after it. What's the R stand for?
We're just kidding, to keep them in order, we're keeping the number the same on every amendment, we just moved down the list.
Okay, okay.
Just for record-keeping.
Uh, this is regarding chicken keeping, a text amendment. So we did receive, um, some revisions based on what we discussed last month.
Yeah, if you want to do, I don't know if you want to do open and close public hearing for that, just when we get that out of the way, and then we'll have Mr. Amat do his thing.
I'd rather see if someone shows up.
Okay, that's fine.
All right.
Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Planning Commission. We emboldened the memo, I discussed kind of those changes that were made from last meeting's discussion. You had liked the idea of giving a little bit more of an ability to keep a little bit more chickens as a baseline starting point, and then a little bit more to scale up as well. So we introduced the text, or we provided the text here that would start with six for the first two acres, and then every whole acre after that, you're permitted to have two more, with twenty being the maximum period in any case. Obviously, that's not to say that a farm can't have more, a farm is still a permitted use, that's different than what we're talking about tonight, but this is the residential accessory use, chicken keeping. We, just for thoroughness and, you know, consideration's sake, we kept some of those other communities in the memo, just for your reference. In terms of the draft ordinance in front of you, we, we wanted to distinguish from the domesticated animals and the non-domesticated animals, because there's already requirements in there pertaining to such as defined, so we just pulled chicken keeping out of those two kind of uses, just so that somebody's not gonna get mixed up and then claim that their chicken keeping is a domesticated animal, and then they have more leniency in that circumstance. We also just added a couple other standards to the very end of the amendment, as you'll see. We clarified that there shall not be any slaughtering of any chickens as part of the chicken keeping, and we put a couple standards in there for, just making sure that the chicken keeping area and the structures are well-maintained to prevent from rodents and vermin and, you know, being harbored underneath any structures and whatnot. We also included the provision to allow, or to require, the structures, including any fencing associated with the chicken coop, uh, chicken keeping area, to be permitted by the township's planning and building office. Anything, I think that was mostly it, um, in terms of this amendment.
So this overall is, this again, this is a recommendation to the township board.
Yes, sir, correct.
Questions, Mr. Andre?
Sure. Um, to Andy or Jeremy, I read this correctly, I think five D, I just want to get this correct. So these are, this can't be, call it free-range chickens or anything, they can't really allow them to be outside, I mean, they're, they're meant to be within, in a closed space.
No, they can be outside in the chicken run, in the, in the run area, so they can be free-range in that fence.
Right, but not throughout the whole property?
Not through the whole property, but setback, setback enough, but that fence area can be pretty large if you have a huge property.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Yep.
Makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Questions?
I don't think I had a, just a clarification here on that same section, five D, it says that the, um, the chicken coop has to be enclosed, and I think also it has to have a, um, uh, closed building, and then, um, then there's, you can't have a fenced run, but the fenced run has to be enclosed too, right?
The.
Is that, is the chicken coop and the, and the.
The fence.
Run, or the fenced run, two separate things?
Yes. Do you, would you prefer I make that more clear by perhaps?
Yeah, that's.
Kind of wondering if, semicolon, if.
As it says, uh.
I could see why you got mixed, why, why you thought the fenced run.
Yes, as he.
Chicken coop is a building, and then you have a fenced area where they have access to go in and out.
Yep, yep. Enclosed building or chicken coop is one thing, fenced run is another thing, as our.
Oh, well, that's a problem then, right?
I'm wondering if we want to break up that sentence so that somebody does not think the fenced run needs to be enclosed, because I can see how you read it that way. Perhaps the use of semicolon?
Uh-huh.
Um, because right now, we're saying, we're, we're, we're understanding that, okay, there's the enclosed building or chicken coop.
Right.
That is where, you know, the enclosed struck building, and then there's a fenced run that is linked, connected to the enclosed building to allow chickens to run around, and that's unenclosed, but just confined by fencing.
But it, the fence, the run doesn't have a, a.
It does not need to have a, it does not have a ceiling.
Not totally enclosed.
We can say unenclosed fenced run.
There's a possibility then a chicken could escape from the coop somehow, maybe, maybe it's not.
They can fly a little bit, to my knowledge, I don't think they fly real, real far or high, but I, you know, it's possible they might be able to take off and fly high enough, but.
You have a six-foot-high fence.
They're not, they're not gonna get out.
They're not getting out.
Okay.
They're not getting out. The danger actually is a hawk getting in, but, hey, that's.
Oh, well, that would be a problem.
This is nature. Circle of life.
That's why they get to run into the house.
Should I say, should I say unenclosed fenced run? Would that help?
Or just a line that says the fenced run.
Outside fenced run attached to the coop is permitted.
You say unenclosed, does that mean that you cannot have a top on it?
Yeah. Right.
Well, if you want to, you can, we're saying we're not going to require it, so maybe.
Right, yeah, just, Mr. Amat suggests a revision that might.
Didn't it work in the?
Or just another line that says the, the run is, is not required.
The run is not required?
The, the open area or run is not required to be enclosed or have a roof structure, or however you want to word that. Yeah, we're not going to require it to have a top on it, no.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you. I think this whole conversation might be moot, because D says chickens shall be confined to an enclosed building. That's pretty much says that you can't put them outside, you can't have them in a run, they've got to be enclosed in a building. So I think the run, unless we change that, is irrelevant. The second comment I have is on five F. I know a bunch of people who have chickens. They get them for two reasons, eggs, and to eat them. And when they have egg layers, the egg layer is only the eggs for a couple years, then they eat them. So we're telling them they can't eat them, so, I mean, if someone wants to eat a chicken, why, who are we to tell them not to?
Yeah, the other question I had is what if a chicken dies, or gets sick?
They eat them.
I, I think that's more for sightline or things of that sort, because I don't think we're not saying you can't.
Yeah, we are.
Well, slaughtering out in the middle of your yard is one thing, doing it in, inside in your home, home or in your garage so nobody can see it, that's a completely different thing. If you want to, my opinion is if you want to eat these things, I don't care, I just don't want to see you doing it.
Then we should.
I don't.
Yeah, I think if we just say slaughtering of chickens in the yard.
In public space.
There we go.
Well, it's not a public space, they're back.
Well.
In, in, oh, public view?
In public view, there we go.
That worked.
That's easy.
You guys add it to the energy.
Mm-hmm.
In any public.
Perfect.
Place, or, yeah, whatever.
Yeah, that one's pretty easy.
Visible or public or.
So I've got a question. Item five E says the commercial sale of eggs is prohibited. What does that mean?
We allow for roadside stands, that, that will allow that, as long as it's temporary, like we discussed before, and we changed per this board. It's temporary, moves in and out every year, you don't have to come see me, but if it's going to be a permanent stand, you're going to have permanent parking, that's got to be approved by you folks in the site plan. So if they want to do, sell eggs at the road, like people sell wood, sell vegetables, not a problem, but if you want to have a commercial full-blown business, and you're going to have a stand out there twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five, that's not okay.
Mr. Bush?
Again, with six chickens, impossible, it's not even an issue. There's not going to be enough eggs to sell, so.
You're, you're only thinking on a two-acre property.
Even if, even eight chickens, not enough to sell. I mean, a family of five is going to eat more than that.
Maybe they don't want to, maybe they want to sell them.
Still won't have enough for a commercial use.
If you get to twenty, twenty chickens, I mean, it's.
Twenty, maybe, but not.
It's possible, but I mean, it's, again, it's, if you're out there doing a roadside stand, again, that's just, it's another one of those catch-all things, that if we need to use it, we'll probably never use that section ever, but in the event that we need that, we've got the teeth in an ordinance, so I can send my code guys out there and enforce something if it gets out of hand.
But we shouldn't, you know.
I, I can't imagine that'll ever be an issue.
Do we want to say it's prohibited except as a permitted roadside stand?
But it's not, but it's, the roadside stand is not always, doesn't always need a perm, it doesn't have to be permitted, those are the things, so I, I, I don't have any heartburn over the way it is.
As long as somebody can come to you, or.
Exactly, you come, I'm in, I'm in charge of code enforcement, you come to me, and the interpretation as it stands today is, I, I don't think we'll ever touch that, that section, but it needed to be, it needed to be in there.
Yeah, I don't think this ordinance is meant to prohibit somebody from bringing, it's, it's more on the premises, I think somebody could bring eggs to a farmer's market.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, as long as it's not a commercial on that site.
Off the premises, yeah.
Yes, exactly, yep.
Anyone else have any? Mr. Joyner?
Um, when I, when I look at, in section seven, number six, you know, it talks about odors, or addicts have been closed, I'm kind of, or I'm thinking of, you know, maybe the odor from chicken droppings. Um, you know, when I look at, what is it, five I, no, it's not five I, let's see. I, I was wondering if there was anything that we should put in here, you know, where odor and droppings might be a nuisance, you know?
Odor's going to be a tough one, um, just like marijuana is a tough one to deal with odor, um, just like.
There's no meter that you.
Just like you have three dogs, and you've got your backyard, you don't pick up your dog droppings in your backyard, that could stink too, obviously, it's not nearly as bad as other things, but if it ever became a problem, again, let me know, and we'll look at it, and if we need to address it, we can address it. This is.
All right.
To get us going and to kind of give some relief to the people who are looking for chickens, again, if we need to add things down the road or modify things, if it's not working for us, my code guys are always on top of it, if they've got a lot of issues, we always bring it back to you folks to, to modify, to make sure it's, they can handle it in the field.
All right, that's fine. Thank you. I've got a separate question. We don't require any minimum size for coop or, or the run area?
So no minimum, but we have maximum.
Yeah. That's based on setbacks and.
Setbacks and our accessory structure ordinance, yep.
Well, we've got twenty-five percent coverage.
We have twenty-five percent of the rear yard, and the, um, uh, the building can only be, well, if they want to pull a full-blown building permit to the building department, then I guess they can, but that's, that's their prerogative, as long as they don't have, under two acres, you're permitted two buildings, the buildings, um, once you get over two acres, the calculation and the number changes. You can have infinite number, but the, the calculation is square footage of house minus garage and any detached buildings. Under two acres is first-floor area square footage minus garage and out buildings, over two acres is total house square footage minus garage and out buildings.
Okay, so.
If they've got the space, and they've got acreage, I mean, it, two acres.
Asking for a minimum, because I know my son has chickens, and he said where he lives, there's a minimum so much area for the coop, per chicken, or something like that. We don't, I mean.
I don't think we need to drill that far, that far into it, my opinion, personal opinion.
Mr. Bush? Just a thought, my, again, my son has them too, he's got thirty, forty chickens, and his coop is eight by twelve for that many, so I don't see it being an issue large. Somebody's not going to build a huge building for four chickens.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was a minimum size, okay. Anyone else? Before we go to the public? All right, we will open up, uh, the public comment portion, any comments? And I don't see that anyone has shown up.
If you want to read the email as part of the public comment, if you would, please.
Uh, we got an email from Ashley Rogalski, and she's, actually, she's obviously in favor, I shouldn't say obviously, um, concerned about the two-acre minimum excluding a huge portion of the residence. She said there's other situations in our township where that's property upkeep, clear rules, nearby communities have already proven backyard, hence can be kept safely and respectfully with guidelines, limiting phthaloxides, et cetera, so she would like to see the size come down.
If you remember, a couple months ago, this is the same woman that made the presentation in front of us as well.
She thanked us for her, she thanked us for her time, I think. All right, did I close the public comment? I did? Okay, good. All right, any other comments from planning commission members? Someone want to make a motion to send, to recommend this or not recommend this to the township board, with changes included that we've discussed tonight?
Two changes, the, make sure that there's clarity on the, not, the run not needing, the runner open area not needing a roof or top, and then the slaughtering of chickens in public view.
I'll make the motion with those changes.
Motion by Ms. Hugo, support by Ms. Nassar. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-one. Next item on our agenda is another text amendment discussion.
Yes, so in front of you, you have, um, discussion, something we've kind of played with in the past, with wall signs, with parcels being close to Eways, seventy-five and four-seventy-five. Now we're discussing pole signage. This is in lieu of a issue that we were dealing with in front of a, the BP gas station over there at Holly and seventy-five. When we took a look at this, um, we decided that maybe it's time to start looking at these pole signs in certain areas. So basically what this is, Andy and I worked on the language to come up with allowance of pole signage as long as the property abutted I seventy-five or I four seventy-five right away. And then I'll let Andy drill down into the basics if.
If so. Yep, yep, so we just put together a pretty basic list of requirements that we'd need to adhere to. That first one, that small three A, would essentially be a fall zone that this sign would stay within in case, you know, a disaster struck and the sign came down, it would, it wouldn't, it wouldn't fall on any neighboring property because of those distance requirements that the setback is essentially less than the height of the sign. And I think we can make that more clear by saying the height of the pole sign shall not exceed the pole sign setback distance from abutting properties, the pole sign setback distance from a abutting right-of-way, or forty feet, just so we know it's the that setback, not the district setback. We, uh, we also have a requirement that the sign be a, be fifty feet within the right-of-way line as well, because if you have a huge property that it butts the highway right-of-way, we don't want them putting that pole sign all the way in the far opposite corner, you know, maybe near a residential area, or maybe near a side street that's less intensive than the freeway. So that's actually getting it to be near the freeway, which is the per, whole purpose of the ordinance. We have the carve-out for the multi parcel or multi, yeah, the multi parcel subdivisions within the DDA, just to encourage, just, you know, one consolidated sign rather than, uh, uh, you know, cluttering of, of signs. And then we have the size requirements. We also have some permit requirements that Jeremy can require as part of a permit package.
Do we, 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 that's covered under.
Well, the fall zone is covered under three A, oh, but the, the permit, yeah, so Jeremy mentioned, sorry, after the, we published the pack and we had a conversation, Jeremy also suggested under E, that E, we also add another permit requirement, that the applicant demonstrate the fall zone, so a radius around the potentially forty-foot sign.
What is the largest sign that we've allowed along there? We had a zoning board of appeals, didn't we, on the freeway?
We have wall signages, but not pole signage.
Okay, that's right.
On the dealer, the distributorship, right?
Yep, O'Sullivan's, yep, they had a bigger sign, but that, that was in lieu of them having a monument sign inside Enterprise Park, we felt that they didn't need, they've got a smaller sign on the building on the front, and then a bigger sign on the back for freeway visibility. Um, but it's the biggest signs that we have, but we don't allow them anymore, is the billboards along seventy-five. Also, we need to add four seventy-five into that.
Okay, add four seventy-five.
Yep.
Good point. On the front page, there's a picture of a sign. Yeah, the pole was removed and masonry was put in underneath that. That would, would comply except for, like, be too, too high, too tall, correct?
It would probably be too tall for a monument sign, I would think, right?
We only allow.
That's a pole sign.
Yeah, that's a pole sign, so monument is, got the foundation on the ground, it's can't be taller than six feet for a monument sign, that's, that's.
Hey, could they turn this into a monument sign?
Not that one, it'd be too tall.
Yep.
And no, I'm, I'm not calling out, I literally picked the closest pole sign to here.
Literally.
Was my rationale for that one, so.
Yep, so this is just along seventy-five and four-seventy-five, not anywhere else allowed.
Yep.
Mr. Bush?
So just a question on three C, which is the size of the sign, and I see that they say it shouldn't exceed a hundred square foot per side, but when I look at the sign in the front, on the front picture you were talking about.
Mm-hmm.
That looks like maybe, I don't know, that's not forty-foot tall.
No, not, not even close.
That sign is over a hundred square feet.
Hmm, no.
That sign's over a hundred square feet, I can guarantee it. So my question is, if we allow a sign twice the height of this one, and have the same-sized sign, are we making that too small for a single entity? Because you're putting this-sized sign up two, three times higher, it kind of loses its purpose, I think, when it's that high. Maybe not, I'm just, just throwing it out there. They allow us to go up in size in a DDA where there's more parcels, which makes sense.
But each parcel can have their own sign.
I understand that.
So this is.
You have a monument sign away from four-seventy-five, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Then. And you can have a wall sign, and then you could have a pole sign, so you could have everything if you abut the, the specific way.
Yeah.
So you could have one of each, so, I mean, you, you, you could have the wall sign, you could say, hey, I don't want it on the front of the building, I want the monument sign, and then I want my, uh, wall sign on the back of the building, and then I can have the pole sign too, so I, actually, no, I take that back, that kid, that's not possible, because you can't have, the, the wall sign has to be over the door, doesn't it?
Wall sign need, does it need to be on the frontage of the street?
I think it, I think it does, I take that back, so, never mind.
There's, there's a, I think a medical facility along seventy-five, the sign faces towards the freeway.
Clearing?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. That one's a weird parcel, because it doesn't have road frontage out on, is that off Saginaw, right?
Holly.
Holly Road, thank you. That doesn't really have any road frontage, so that one's a little weird to have. They don't really have frontage, they have a monument sign, but then they have it along the building that faces seventy, yeah, I see what you're saying, but I, they don't technically have.
It's a wall sign.
It's a wall sign, it's, 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 yeah, that, they were granted, that was a variance, so that was, they were granted that, but it's not a typical scenario, I guess, in that instance, so that, that one we might have to take a look at, and then if it, we deem it needs a variance, we'll have to take a look at it, but, again, I, I don't think we're going to have too many of those scenarios where they're going to have all of those things, because most businesses, if they're allowed this pole sign along four-seventy-five, that's going to get closer and get them more exposure than a wall sign anyway, so, because the wall signs are predicated on the frontage from their front road, so I mean, it's, again, it's one of those weird scenarios, but I see, I see the concern, so I, yeah.
Just a question.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you. So we're talking about on the highway here, it's going to be higher because of more of sightline. As far as the size, this sign here has listed the name, probably the phone number, probably who's operating it, the address, those signs on the highway are not going to be listing so many words on there, it's going to be GMC, GM, Texaco, whatever it is, and they're not going to need, their, their letters are going to be larger than what they would be on this sign, in my opinion. I'm okay with the sign size.
Again, it's one of those things that if we feel, if we get a bunch of variances with the businesses, we start this, and they say a hundred's not enough, we need a hundred-and-fifty, we need two hundred, it'll come back to you folks and we'll amend it, I can't see that happening, but if we get a run of variances, that's, that's the time that we should, we can really look at things, and. should, we can really look at things and, and drill down and see if we need changes.
And to be quite honest with you, on a board like that, I don't want a bunch of little words. I, I, you, we don't necessarily want drivers sitting there going, hey, let, oh, they, they're open from this to this, the Monday, Friday, I mean, all that information, you just want the name and say there's where it is type of thing, so.
Hold on?
Yes, sir. Well, maybe, no.
So just a couple of questions. How, when, I think in the memo it says, you know, businesses have expressed interest, like say over the past couple of years, how many, how many inquiries have we received about signages like this?
A couple dozen.
Okay.
Since I've been here, a couple dozen.
Okay, that's, that's good to know, it's.
It's more been billboards, but then if we say, as soon as we say no to billboards, they go, well, what about a pole sign, and I have to go, well, we don't allow those either, so.
Perfect. So what about lighting of the signs? Because being higher, we're going to, I, I, I'm not sure if it's in a different part of the ordinance about internally lit, we certainly don't want uplighting.
So we can add uplighting, it could be backlit, I'm okay with.
Backlit, okay.
Or downlit if there's.
Or downlit, but as long as prohibit uplit, yeah.
No, no uplighting, because that all of a sudden creates this beam of light, right?
Yeah.
If you're illuminating from the ground, you got to go in forty feet up in the air, you have light pollution, right?
Yeah, that's a good.
We'll, we'll add that right to this.
One other thing, and I'm going to say this through experience, I found a loophole in a different community's ordinance, I was able to locate a sign on somebody else's property. It doesn't say specifically here that this has to be on the same property.
Do we, do we prohibit off-site signs in general?
Does it have to be?
Think we might, we'll have to look into that one, because I swear I've, I swear I've seen that.
I don't, we'll need to check the ordinance if we have an off-site sign prohibition.
It's a billboard.
Well, no, because I've got this issue, it's funny you say like, because I've got this issue up and down Saginaw Street, there's a, I won't name businesses, but there's a business behind a vacant piece of property, they don't have road frontage on Saginaw, but they actually have a drive that comes down into them, and they have an easement on another property, and they're, and they're have a, they're bickering about it right now.
Got it.
So.
Exactly right, so I, I would, I would suggest that easements not be included as part of this, I, I don't know how you do that, all I'm doing is I'm just bringing up, maybe, maybe you guys have a little bit more experience on how you can write it into the ordinance, what to preclude businesses that don't have frontage to then advertise, because you can, you can certainly, I did an easement, that's how I got around it, and was able to do it, but just maybe keep that in mind.
Mm-hmm.
We do define off-premise signs, but I, I want to make sure that we have regulations that maybe prohibit them.
Maybe if you just do a little bit of research into it.
Yeah, and just, and just add that to the, to this as well.
Yep, thank you.
So you're looking for input tonight, you've got some of that.
Yep.
And you're going to revise this.
Public hearing next week, tomorrow.
Do we need to schedule a public hearing?
I would suggest that we schedule, if everybody's in agreeance, to schedule the next, at the next available meeting, which will be September fourth, I believe.
Sounds right.
September fourth is our next scheduled planning commission meeting, and that would be my suggestion, is we, we name it that for the public hearing for this amendment.
Did anybody, anyone else have any other comments regarding the signage?
That gives you time, so short turnaround, quick turnaround.
Do we have time to notice? It's true, yep.
You can just say next available.
Technically, we do, but it's a, if you can get it in the paper deadline.
Technically, I can put it in the paper for the twenty-first, if we have, if I have a quick turnaround from Andy and have it, I can turn it in on, I can do it on Monday.
Yeah, I can get you something tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll just say, if we can't do it, let's just say next available, and then that'll, that'll cover us in case, for whatever reason, something happens and we can't do it on the fourth.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to put this memorandum regarding pole signs along freeways?
Alexandra Nasser, so moved.
Motion by Business Nasser and support by Mr. Joyner to, we'll say, provide, or.
Set the public comment.
Set public comment for the next available meeting, likely September fourth, if you can't make that deadline, then whatever the next available.
Yep.
All right, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Of officers.
So it's that time of the year again that we have to do, yeah?
Yeah, it seemed like it was a couple months ago.
I know. So this is where we, we, as a group, which I'm glad we have all nine members here, because we haven't had that in a while, that we're going to do the chair, co-chair, and the secretary. So amongst yourselves, it's, you guys decide who is leading the way, and then also, we will also have to do the site plan review committee. Oh, we do, we're missing, we are missing one, I take that back, I'm sorry, Jay Johnson's not here, so we have.
What is he going to do?
Nice.
Yeah.
Still want to be secretary?
Either yes or no, whatever, anybody, yeah, I'll do whatever at the pleasure of whatever.
So as it stands now, it is Mr. Gellings' chair, Mr. Bush's co-chair, and Mr. Hoffman is secretary.
We're calling vice chair.
Or vice chair, whatever, same thing, you know what I mean.
I could have up my winter.
Anybody else want to throw their head into the ring, or everybody okay with that?
Perfect. I'm okay with the current.
Perfect. If I can have a motion to that, and then also can we have a separate one for members of the site plan review committee?
So moved.
Ms. Coulter made a motion to keep the officers as, as R and support by Ms. Hugo. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. And then, who do we have on site plan right now?
Three members, it's yourself, Mr. Bush, and.
Johnson.
And Johnson, yes. So.
We have a, are we used to have a backup?
And we have an alternate, Mr. Hoffman is our alternate, yes.
Everyone okay with that, as is?
No.
So you wouldn't want to do anything different?
Oh, good.
Motion by.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Mr. Andre to keep the site plan review members as is, supported by, what, that was Ms. Hugo?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Committee reports.
I have nothing to report.
Very good, let's hear it.
Um, Ms.
You said nothing, did you?
Nothing, I said nothing.
I don't have anything yet.
I have one thing, we have one more spot to fill for our Fall Conference, if anybody's free, it is the October, October twenty-second through the twenty-fourth in Kalamazoo. I need to know the next few weeks if anybody else is available, so I can get the hotel rooms and the conference paid for before we take off, so. It's myself, Mr. Joyner, Mr. Bush at the moment, but we have one more spot available. I'm just looking your direction, you said, you and Mr. Andre.
I saw Paul out of my peripheral, too.
You, you both had said that you were, if there was nobody else, you guys, somebody would said that they were interested, if.
No.
I don't want to force anybody, if we can't go, if we don't have enough, we don't have enough, we don't have to, we don't have to have three people go, if you can, you can, if you can't, you can't, I'm just throwing it out there, we have one more spot available, so.
Will there be donuts? I'm just kidding.
Donuts?
Yeah.
Sure?
I'm kidding.
Yep, yes.
Do you want to do more papers?
Is that a Friday?
It's Wednesday through Friday.
I now go, I'm, I would love to go, actually.
You're in?
What were the dates again, Jeremy?
Twenty-second through the twenty-fourth.
Of October?
Yeah.
So is it a, is it a two night or a three night?
So the township will pay for us to go Tuesday night, stay Tuesday night, and you come home Friday at early afternoon.
Perfect. I would love to. Sure, my boss will be thrilled.
About zoning board of appeals, there been anything going on there?
Yes, we've had, actually, a, quite a few cases recently, we've had more this year than I've had since we've started, since I've started here, so it's, we've had pool setbacks, we've had, we've, this later this month, or, yeah, later this month, we'll have one for same property, but for a sea, Florida, Florida room, four-season room setback issue.
Common themes and what the variances are.
Yeah, it's, it's the same property that they, they're in a subdivision, and they thought they owned more property than they do, but they, and they're in a condo, they're in a site condo, so they thought they owned to the detention pond water edge and they're twenty feet from it, their property line is, so putting in a pool, in-ground pool, they needed more space, so they said it's, you know, it's a very specialized circumstance because nobody will ever develop behind them, they've got the pond then to, there's no harm, no foul in that.
The variance was four.
What's that?
Tell me what it was for.
Pool.
Zero setback to the property line.
Yeah.
Interesting.
They proved their case, there was a lot of, there's a lot of issues in the township previously for pool setbacks, and we will be rectifying that going forward, but they, they proved their case, and they were granted the zero lot line for the pool, but it's not just the pool's edge, it's the.
Concrete.
Concrete, then the pool edge, so they've got four feet of concrete and then the pool's edge, so it's not, the pool's not right on the lot line, it's.
You said we've been, you've been having more variance requests this year, has it been all been pool?
No, it's been, I'm, everything else escapes my memory at this point, but it's, this one just stands out.
Pole sign?
Pole sign?
Yeah, did they come in for variance?
The, the BP gas station that I mentioned earlier, they came in because they did the work before they were granted a permit for it, we were trying to figure out how to mitigate it, and they decided to put it up anyways, but this now, if this gets pushed through, they will qualify regardless, so it's, it is what it is. That was a conditional based on if this gets approved as presented, and it seems like it will be, they'll still qualify even with the revisions we did today, so. That's the only thing I can remember what it was, we didn't, yeah, I can't remember.
Been a while.
It's been a minute.
So who are the members on the ZBA?
We have Debbie Hone, Ryan Thompson, Jay Johnson, Mr. Bush is a alternate, Ron Eaton, and our board representative is Mr. Yancho.
Thank you. We didn't have anything, I don't know if we got lost in the discussion here, but we haven't had any site plans to review, other than what we did at.
Nope.
Planning Commission.
Nope, no, you will, the, if you remember from the Acker Mansion, Crew Wood will be presenting in September, they'll have their PUD documentation and their site plan, it is drastically less than what you saw, they have kind of decided that they are going to use the mansion first and then do the new building as a later phase. So it's, it's a big undertaking, they're already remodeling the mansion, there's a hundred-person ballroom in the back of the mansion, so they'll use that as smaller weddings and smaller functions first, get the site work done, get the parking lot done, and then they can do down the road as a second phase, they can do a larger building that they came in originally, so. They'll have the full PUD documentation to go with it, and then they'll have phasing on their site plan.
The other business?
Nothing.
Anyone have anything?
I have a question for Jeremy on the Grand Summit development.
Yep.
And Grand Blank Road.
Yep.
Every time I drive by there, nothing is going on.
Hmm.
I just wondered what the status is.
They, they build what they can, when they can, and then it's quiet for a minute, and then he comes in and pulls two or three buildings, and then they build those, and then it's quiet for a minute, and then they build another two building, I mean, it just is what it is, there's twelve, twelve or thirteen buildings in total, and he's, he's about done, so.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it's very slow, and there's no landscaping, and there's a, what looks like it's going to be some kind of a pond, it's just a big hole right now.
That's, that's the regional detention that was required by the county in order to, to construct that site, on the far west side, you're, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yep, that's a regional detention, yep.
If I can follow up on that, so all lands, not all, but landscaping is going to be wait until every single building's done, or?
Yes and no.
Seems like the, what I'll call the east side is really done and just a bunch of dirt.
Yeah, I, I haven't been required to go out there yet, so I drive by it just like you guys do, so I don't know what status it is yet, but we can, I can.
Well, it's a bunch of dirt.
Okay, we can start pushing the issue.
You would think that, I mean, that side, I could see where they're building, you know, not.
Yeah, yeah, if they are occupying, they should be trying, try, at least attempting to get grass in there.
And that's who I heard it from, is somebody who's occupying it right now.
Okay.
I have one question for Jeremy also. It has to do with property that is for sale, like vacant property, whether it be commercial, most of them I think are commercial, are they, do they not have to maintain their property, such as grass and weeds and all that stuff?
Yes and no. If it is a, in residential, residential's a little different than commercial.
Right.
Let's just say you have six vacant lots, and then you've got one on each end, anything that abuts a occupied home, it's not, if it's in under construction, that's different, but if it's occupied, everything that touches the property line of the homes, we make them mow the whole thing. If there's three on the interior where it doesn't touch any other occupied homes, they just need to do the right-of-way. Commercial's a little different, they, at a minimum, should do the right-of-way, they're in a commercial district, so if it's a vacant piece of property, not, not really, no.
A resident asked me, and I wasn't sure.
Oh, yeah, if there's issues, because we had a issue that we dealt with a couple weeks ago, there was a vacant lot next to the Financial Plus Credit Union on Saginaw Street, and the Financial Plus called and said, hey, we've got issues, we can't see coming out, and they already, they mow the right-of-way, but they have branches and trees in that right-of-way, and we went and said, hey, you, to the vacant landowner, we said, you have to take this down and bring it back another four or five feet, or whatever it needs to do, that'll appease the sightline issue, and they did, it took them a minute, but they did. So we, we will go after those kind of things, but to have them clearcut it?
Yeah.
No, because we don't know.
There are places that have.
Because if there's existing vegetation and they can reuse it, we don't want them to knock everything flat and then have to pay the money to go back and replant the same thing, and it's not going to be as tall, so if they got mature trees on the property, I know we're not going to make them take any of that down.
Okay.
But if it's an issue and we get a complaint, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything for other business? If not, motion for adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Nasser to adjourn at, what are we, eight? Seven forty-nine. That was support by Ms. Hugo. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes eight to zero.